I'd like to call the special meeting of December 14th to order. It is 6:31 PM. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody, for joining tonight for our special meeting. Bill, I'm going to turn it over to you to get things started, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, thank you, Michelle. So I thought it would be prudent to have a conversation with the board in regards to the status of school, whether in person or virtual, after the Christmas break, upon our return to Christmas break. There's a concern with the rapid number of cases increasing in the county and the positivity rates in the county about, you know, where we should go as far as the return to school of in-person instruction after break. So I thought it'd be prudent to have a discussion. I know we started this discussion last Thursday. There was a request to have a special meeting to continue that discussion. So I know there's probably many questions from the board and some information that can be shared tonight. So I thought it would be prudent to have this conversation tonight, so.
Since you guys kicked off some of this on last week, I think it's best if we turn it over to, Ellen, I'll turn it over to you to get things started, and then we'll go from there. Pick us up where we left off, if you could.
Yeah, I think, I think where we left off would be the discussion of is there value in thinking about delaying a return to in-person school? In-person classes, instruction, when we return from the January break? So the question really was, is there value in that? Or is it actually better not to do that? And talking through sort of all of the various facets of that, you know, sort of what needs to be considered for each side of that discussion? And then, and also the discussion of what we all need to be thinking about and understanding as this all evolves, if and when the decision needs to be made about moving to remote. That, you know, I mean, obviously, if the Department of Health makes a recommendation to move to remote, there's no question there. But I do, it's my understanding that many other districts are having sort of emergency board meetings. And those emergency board meetings are leading to decisions to move to remote instruction. And it just seemed an opportunity to have that discussion, at least to some extent, ahead of time. So we're all thinking about the different sides and facets of it, if and when we get to the point where we need to start thinking about making those decisions. So, I mean, I guess that's kind of two things, actually, specifically the January and then just all of the other pieces in between.
And Bill, you've got information that you've sent us today. Do you want to read that message from Eric?
Sure, so I have a message from Eric Feist, who is the Director of Health for the Madison County Department of Health. And here's his statement. As you know, at this time, we have no evidence of COVID transmission within our schools. And as you have heard, the governor mentioned that schools are one of the safer places to be, which I concur. The governor has mentioned, as we have in our weekly calls, that the predominant mode of transmission for COVID is in the home. After the Thanksgiving holiday gatherings, we saw a surge in COVID cases that have strained our local public health system. With the December holidays before us, we expect much of the same in terms of family gatherings that will result in a renewed surge in cases by the second to third week in January. The question you pose is challenging. On one hand, we do anticipate an increase in cases that in turn increases the potential risk of transmission in the school setting. However, on the other hand, because of the work the schools have done and the preventative protocols you have put into place and into practice, the schools should still be a safe place to be. From a health perspective, I see a need to close schools proactively at this time. And that's a direct quote from Eric Feist.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Travis, Corey, Jen, your thoughts?
Well, Bill, I was wondering if you could give us a sense of how staff, faculty are feeling inside the building? What their thoughts are, what maybe concerns they've raised to you?
There's a clear level of anxiety in the building. With all the uncertainty, with the rate of new cases surrounding us, there's a number of schools that have made the determination to continue with remote instruction after the break. I do want to preface that many of those districts are having staffing issues because of existing cases and of existing quarantine issues. So that's part of their thought process on closing. But there is a level of anxiety within the building. You know, we are all uncertain about, you know, modes of transmission. So, you know, I, that's the reason I posed the question to Eric Feist, to get an expert opinion from the Department of Health. And he has reiterated, he was on a call last week with our faculty and staff, that they had the opportunity to ask direct questions to him. You know, and he reiterated that, right now, you're safer in school than you are in the community. The data and the evidence they have right now is that the transmission rate in schools, they're just not seeing. So when I look at two data sets, what's best for students as far as teaching and learning, clearly, the answer is in-person instruction. The second data set is the health and safety. And when the Director of Health is stating that, right now, schools are safe, then those two data sets align to continue to be in person until we can't. You know, we're going to continue to monitor the situation. If the numbers continue to rise and we are in a situation where a number of our students, faculty, and staff are placed in quarantine, that we cannot continue to deliver in-person instruction, then we would make the determination to go to transition to, to remote learning. And our faculty and staff is ready for that. And I would publicly ask our parents to be ready for that, because that could happen very quickly. That could happen over break. You know, if, if we get calls from the Department of Health saying, you know, so-and-so, you know, X amount of your staff needs to go in quarantine, and we find that we don't have the staffing to open up on January 4th, then we're going to make that determination and put that out to our families. So that could happen very quickly. You know, or if we have another positive cases within the building. But to answer your question, Corey, there is a level of anxiety in the building, absolutely. And it's the unknown that really is driving that anxiety.
Yeah, it seems like regardless of how fast cases are rising, or even if they stop rising, the anxiety would not stop rising, right? That's going to, do you, do you and your administrative staff feel like you can adequately assuage that anxiety and keep people together? That they, they feel safe and they feel happy to come to work still? Or is this going to be something that's going to be an issue, you think, going forward?
I think it's, it's a challenge going forward, just because of the uncertainty. You know, every day, you know, people, you know, within the building wake up and go, is today going to be the day? You know, are we going to have a positive case, which we haven't yet? You know, is today going to be the day that we have a number of people going to quarantine? You know, because we do have family members right now who are positive, and their children are in quarantine. So it's real, it's here. So to kind of temper that, I don't know if we can manage that because of the uncertainty of that. You know, there's, every day, we wake up with that anxiety. And, you know, right now, we are very safe. And, you know, you have the Department of Health telling us that we're very safe, and we haven't had a positive case. And part of that is the mitigation strategies that we have in place right now. You know, we are masking all day, every day. You know, we are socially distancing. You know, our cleaning staff is doing an excellent job cleaning and disinfecting the building. So when, when I hear the Director of Health say, you know, because of the mitigation strategies you have in place, kids are safer in school than they are in the community, because you can control what the kids are doing in the building. You can't control what they're doing outside the building. So those are all factors that, you know, that we've talked about, that we, that we weigh every day.
Bill, is there any, so, you know, obviously, we're hybrid right now. If we went fully remote, is there any worry that some of these kids' parents or guardians might not have the same babysitter lined up? And they might be, you know, exposing more people? Or in an environment where it's not suitable for remote learning?
Absolutely, yeah, that's a real concern. The, the strain is already, you know, in the households. And if we were to go remote for an extended period of time, obviously, people are going to have to set up daycare. Some people might have to take time off of their job, and they may be essential workers, and they can't. So we need to weigh all of those factors, because that's a real burden placed on families. And then, you know, you look at the social emotional health of our students, they're better off in school. You know, that we can, we can at least have two days with our middle school and high schoolers of in-person. Elementary, it's four days of in-person for our pre-K and K, and then our cohorting. So we're able to control that. Two days of in-person instruction is much better than no days of in-person instruction. So benefit to that.
Do you have any idea if, obviously, if a fair amount of staff are quarantined, that'll play our hands? But as far as students go, is there a rough idea of if X percentage of students are quarantined, or, you know, their parents or guardians have pulled them, that it will force our hand to go fully remote?
That could certainly happen, Travis. And we have a district close to us that that just happened. They didn't have enough kids in their classroom to be able to effectively continue in-person instruction. So they made the decision that they would have to go virtual.
Now, another thing I've heard some schools have done, and I don't know if this would be a possibility, and obviously, it would only, to a certain point, it wouldn't be plausible. But if there were a situation where a teacher was quarantined, but their class wasn't, would they be able to teach from home and a substitute would be the monitor in the classroom?
Yes. Yep, we, we have allowed our faculty, for a number of reasons, to be able to stay home and teach from home. It's better for teaching and learning, you know, if they're able to. Obviously, if they're symptomatic and they, they can't continue to teach from home, then we would turn it over to the substitute, and we have plans in place for that. But right now, we, we think it's what's best for kids, if we allow our teachers to be able to teach from home, if they can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mentioned this last week, but just to mention it again in this setting and in this meeting, is there a concern that by extending the break, that we would have more travel and more students not staying home? And encouraging them to travel, because they'd have more free time, per se?
Yeah, I think that it's out there, you know, we can't control. We can certainly suggest and continue with our messaging that, you know, we should be very careful. We should limit travel. But you can't control that. And when, when they're in school, you can control that. Whether it's two days or not, you know, they're in school, two, three, four days. We're able to control that. And if they're not in school, we can't. Ellen, I don't know if you have anything from a medical standpoint that can speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, so I've really been chewing on this pretty hard since our meeting on Thursday. And, and, you know, again, risk benefit, risk benefit, and, and all of those pieces. And it really, at the end of the day, I do feel like the benefit of being in person outweighs the risk. And I, that's a hard way to say it that way. But, but, and, and it's a lot of reasons. And it's, it's everything that everybody has just talked about. It's that if we come back remote for two weeks, we have no idea what's going on with our students, our staff, anybody out there. If, if people are still traveling, if, if kids are ending up in babysitting groups that are unstable and different, and, and you end up with more mixing and more spread through your school community in, in, in those spheres. And it's, it's not even necessarily people still traveling. It's, again, the families that have to work. And where are those kids going, and who's watching them? And, and, and they're probably not going to be wearing masks, and they're probably not going to be six feet apart, and they're probably not going to be screened before they get there. And, and it's, it's all of those pieces. And so it's all of those pieces of that, that mitigation sort of, you know, tower that you build. There's no one thing that's happening in school that makes it magical. It's the, it's the accumulation of all of those pieces. It's, it's making sure that people don't have symptoms. It's, it's making sure that people don't have fevers when they get there. It's making sure that everybody's wearing masks. And I, I mean, this community deserves a round of applause for mask-wearing, because it's amazing, and, and it makes a difference. It's, you know, kids being six feet apart. It's the school being de-densified. It's the cleaning, it's the cohorts. It's, I mean, you can make a list of 15 things about why it's not spreading in schools and why students and staff are safer in school than out. And so I feel, I had all these things in my head, and getting them into words is... I feel like the kids that need to be in school most are the ones at highest risk for being in a higher-risk situation if we don't come back, if we don't come back in person when we can. Because there is going to be a time, or there may be a time, when we can't. And so then, those kids, those families, all of those pieces have now, you know, if that family only has two weeks of vacation, and, and we've burned up that two weeks when we didn't have to, now what happens to that family and those kids? And, and again, I do feel like all of these pieces protect staff, employees, faculty in place. And, and I worry about, and I don't worry, but, but, but I'm concerned about the spread that could, could be occurring, you know, within families and, not within families, but within groups outside of school, where when people are in school, they're washing their hands, they're cleaning their hands, they're wearing their masks, they're keeping apart. When they're not, they get relaxed. And they don't always wear their masks. And they get together, because, you know, we're together all the time, so we can get together. Well, but that is a problem. And so I feel like the, the right thing to do is to come back in person. And I feel like it can, it is, can be safe. But I also feel like it's a team effort with everybody that plays a role in this school. And that means anybody who traveled over break, being honest and doing and registering whatever that travel was, and whatever that travel quarantine is required. And that means if, if employees are going to travel, letting the school know. And letting the school know that they can't be back, because they are required to travel quarantine. That means every person who is symptomatic shouldn't be in school. Every person that's supposed to be quarantining shouldn't be in school. Anybody who's tested positive shouldn't be in school. You know, I mean, it's, all of those pieces are what makes it safe. And everybody has to, to be on board with that and be a part of that. And, and all of those stacked-up layers of mitigation make it so that if one of those sneaks by, you have all of those layers to catch that and to, to prevent spread as much as you can within that very controlled environment. So that's, I think that's where my head is in all of that at this point.
Thanks, Ellen. For me, I think it's the data and, and versus the fear. And I understand fear is real, I have it too. But we have to go with the data, and the data supports us being in school. And so for me, until that data changes, we need to, we need to stay in school. We need to keep our kids in the classroom as long as we can.
So two things I think are really important to me are, one is, is can we start thinking creatively about how we can message about this being a community effort to keep us safe? Whether it be not traveling over the holidays, not getting together in, in large groups with people, especially outside of the community, leaving the community, and to get together with big family groups, all those different things. And could that be something where, you know, our messaging is also a learning opportunity for, for, for kids? You know, you can see kids in science class collaborating with the art class to create some posters, or the tech club to create some videos. And doing some of those things where it's, it's, this isn't just like, you know, you as the superintendent is lecturing, or the principal's lecturing, but it's everybody learning together and trying to make sure this is a community effort, like it has been this whole year, right? But keeping it going when it's, when it's hard. So the one, that's one thing that's important to me is the messaging. The second is, and this is the one I don't have any ideas for, this is where it really will depend on you and your leadership team, Bill, is, can we, what can we do to assuage the anxieties of the, of faculty, of staff? Making sure that they feel safe? That if they do feel like they're not safe, can we make sure they have, we have plans in place where they can feel safe? Whether it's getting them better PPE, better protection, better, better chance to stay at home in case they feel like they're, they're, they're not safe, or they're not able to come in, that they need to quarantine? Even just de-stigmatizing, you know, the, what does it mean to say that I can't come into work today? That it's not a failure on your part? It's, it's about your concern for other people being safe and keeping the school safe? So all those things, I think, are what we, you know, those two main things. Messaging and helping the community know that this is what we need to do. And then just finding as many ways, working with, with, with the teachers and with the staff, to figure out, what are, what do you need to feel less anxious? What can we do to assuage that anxiety while still providing as many in-person days as possible? By making it so that, you know, the in-person days aren't so stressful that they're, they're, that makes work terrible, or makes work even, even more problematic than it already is, with, with all the safety precautions we have in place?
I want to piggyback off what Corey just said with the messaging part. I think it's important to, to also state that if you are going to do those things, what... I mean, and obviously, the quarantine restrictions are changing and the testing restrictions. But I think it's important to educate on that end of it as well, so that people are aware and to know that, I think Ellen stated a few minutes ago, that if you are going to do this, then this is what you need to do after. And it, it doesn't mean don't come to school if you have a positive test. It means don't come to school, you know, if you've traveled, if you have any symptoms, and what exactly the symptoms are. So I think that that education is just as important with that messaging, to make it wholesome.
And I agree, Jen. And part of the reason that we have not had a positive case in school is because our families and staff have been very proactive in their measures. You know, if a parent, you know, in the morning, they screen their child, and their child has a temperature, or they have symptoms, they call immediately. They either call Betsy or the building principals and say, should I keep my, my child home? And they have. Or if they call and say, you know, I have a family member that's tested positive, and we've had a direct exposure, what should we do? And so, you know, with the help of our parents and our staff, the same way, that's helped us be in the position that we are now, and not having a positive case in school. So we'll certainly continue that messaging. But I just, I want to make a public statement that we are where we are because of the, the concern and understanding and proactive measures that our families have taken.
I think I agree with you guys on the messaging part. And Bill, if it is phrased kind of how you just said it, that'd be great. But we do have to be careful with how the wording of that message is regards to travel, to kind of stay in our, stay in our lane, you know, like, say that it's wise to do these things. But as far as, like, we shouldn't say, "Don't do that." Might be smart to, but it's not our authority to tell people what they can and can't do, unless it violates our policies to coming back to school. Do you guys see where I'm going there?
Well, I think for me, it's not saying what, what we're saying people should do. But here's the CBC recommendations, here's the county recommendations, here's the state recommendations, right? Whatever they say, you know, there are state mandates about traveling, because everybody knows what the state mandates are for travel. If you're going to go to Montana, you can't just come back and act like everything's...
And I hear you there, but when we say travel, are we talking about traveling out of state or traveling within state?
Well, I guess, I'd say we're not saying anything.
We're not saying anything.
Okay.
We're saying whatever the recommendations are, yeah. We don't have any recommendations, the, the state, the county, the CDC does.
And what I was going to say, you know, coming back to the data, which, which has been supported by what everybody has said, is that it's not just about traveling out of the area anymore. It's about what gatherings you're attending and what you're doing during those gatherings. If, if you get together with family that's local, but who, you know, it's a web, right? I mean, so I have contact with these three people in my home, but then they have contact with these people, and they have contact with these people. And so that web is, is part of what you bring together. Every time you get together, even with a small group of people, you bring that whole web with you into that small group. And so even as you're getting together in, in family groups over the holidays, I know people don't want to think about this, but if you wear masks, your risk of transmitting something, even in a small family group, is lower. If you're not eating a meal with 13 of your closest or not closest friends and relatives, you decrease your risks of exposure. And so all of these things, while they protect the school, which is what we're talking about right now, also protect individuals and families. And, and it's all of those pieces. And, and I, I actually do want to be a little bit careful talking, I would, again, in my other role, I would want to be a little bit careful talking about traveling, because it's not just travel anymore. It's, I mean, it's, Eric Feist has said it over and over again. It's small gatherings in people's homes. And so again, for, it's not, it's not about telling people what they can and can't do. It's helping people to understand where the risks are and where they're introducing risk into their lives, and, and, and helping them to choose. But then knowing what that risk brings back into a larger community on the other side, so.
Bill, is there anything that you need from us that you haven't heard from us? I mean, I'm not trying to wrap us up. I'm just trying to see, like, is, is there something else that you were expecting from meeting with us again tonight that you haven't gotten, or anything to that sort?
No, I think, you know, the conversation around, you know, should we be proactive in closing, or should we continue with in-person instruction? What, you know, that, that risk-reward discussion, I think, was really important to have. And I think it was really important to hear what Eric Feist had said. And I think it was really important to hear from a medical standpoint, you know, Ellen's recommendation and suggestions on that risk-reward, and then your comments. So, no, I think based on the information that I have at this time, I think what's best for kids is to continue with in-person instruction until we can't. And when I say until we can't, that means, you know, staff, students being in quarantine, that we can't continue to offer in-person instruction in a viable manner.
Bill, is making that switch, I heard Ellen said before that there's been some emergency board meetings. Is making that switch something that the board actually has to do anything for? Or is that something that you make the call and we don't need to be, have a meeting for?
I, I think it's a joint effort. I will make the recommendation, but I think it has to be with the support of the board. But I will make a recommendation, as I am tonight.
Bill, I agree with you there, but did you ever find out if a school is allowed to go fully remote by choice without board approval?
Yes, they are.
They are. We didn't, we talked about earlier how the staff feels. What's the general feeling of the student body?
I don't know, Travis. We have not, we haven't surveyed them, we haven't had... Um, I, I don't know Travis. We have not, we haven't surveyed them. We haven't had discussions. We had, we had discussion with the administrative team and obviously we have staff feedback.
Very good. Would there ever be a scenario where it might make sense to have the high school go fully remote and the elementary and or middle school stay in person?
There's certainly schools that have done that, you know, and, and some schools have done that from the reopening plan from day one. You know, that their elementary was in, in person five days a week and their high school was completely virtual. Um and middle school, you know, with our reopening plan, um planning, we determined that it was important for our middle school students who are a very vulnerable age group, right? That they have the opportunity to be in person and our students who are starting to prepare for college and career readiness, that they're in person as well. So that's why our plan looks the way it does because we, we want it to be um cognizant of everybody's learning needs and give everybody the opportunity to have some piece of in-person instruction.
Yeah, um, as far as the student bodies feelings go, I know I've talked to my two teenage daughters and they've told me, oh, I don't know, whatever. So that's, uh, that's what I've heard from them. The other, uh, back to the messaging part, I think another thing that I've benefited a lot from is having, you know, not only having, having insurance and having a, you know, a, 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 a healthcare provider that can contact with issues, also having a friend, multiple friends to the community, um, but a close family friend who I can ask questions to who's a, who's a physician. Um maybe part of that messaging is also who can you call, right? You can, you know, here's the, here's the nurse's number. You got a question about, we were thinking about doing this over the holiday. What, you know, does that break any rules? I don't know who, who everybody would call. I know who I would call, but I don't know what in every situation. Is it something, you know, where, when do you call your, your doctor to ask the question? When do you look up, you know, what are the guidelines that you can already look up? Are there, you know, are there easy things? So just getting that information to people, I think is going to help them make informed decisions. I think our community rate has been so low and we've done such a good job as a community, I have to feel like I trust this community if they have the right information to make the right choice. And I think that that's the, that's, that's the trust we, we have to have with our community because we, we have, we've done a better job than people around us and, and schools around us and, and even nearby. So I think that we have a community that's willing to, willing to follow the rules and sometimes it's not about willingness, it's just about knowledge and just getting to know what are, what are the recommendations? And, you know, as Ellen said, it's not just traveling, it's having people in your home that, you know, all those things are things people need to, need to know. And we as a school and, and our students really can do a great job of messaging. I saw the video about buying the sports booster apparel. And if they can get me interested in that kind of a commercial, then I'm sure they can get the information out that they need.
What a great point, Cory. Bill, I'm just wondering too, after the call last week with Eric, has any of the anxiety changed at all with the staff? Has it helped at all to hear from him?
It, it has. Um after that meeting, I, I had an email from one of our counseling staff that said it has really leveled the anxiety. Um I had a conversation with the HTA president and things have leveled a little bit. I think it helped. You know, you know, when you hear from the department, the director of health for the department in Madison County that's, has said, you know, schools are safe, you're safer in school than in the community, that helps level the anxiety. You know, we are not medical experts, we're educational experts and, you know, to hear it come directly from the Department of Health or from Dr. Larson or any other medical professional that's saying you're safer in school than you are in the community, that, that helps level the anxiety quite a bit. So yes, it did help a lot.
Great, thank you.
And maybe that's something you can do again, if we are lucky enough to be back as we're hoping to be in the beginning of January, maybe, you know, right off, there can be a meeting to know numbers and stats from, from Eric at that point as well.
Yeah, and Go ahead, Ellen.
Go ahead. No, you go.
Um Cory, to go back to, you know, who do you call? Um, you know, the Department of Health, even though they are, they are overwhelmed right now with contact tracing and, and everything that's going on in the county. Eric and his staff has been outstanding and they have made themselves readily available to answer any question at any time. Um so, you know, and he's very comfortable with me stating that publicly, if you have a question, call his office and they will, they will do their best to answer it. And to hear it from them, I think really helps. Sorry, Ellen, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just, um, I, I was thinking about sort of the idea too of helping people to pre-plan for the if and the when, um, because again, it could happen at, at any time that, that something would change and we would need to be going remote. Sort of all of a sudden and sort of helping families to pre-plan their needs in that situation and, and helping the district to understand what those needs are going to be. How many families are going to need childcare for essential workers? And how many families are going to need, you know, meal delivery and what is that going to mean for staff? Because going remote doesn't mean that all the staff is going remote.
No.
There's still a modest number of people in the building. Um and again, with all of those mitigation strategies in place, they are um in the same, you know, buffer of protection that, that you would be with everybody there. But, you know, again, I think that idea of pre-planning so that if and when this happens, it's not, um, and, and, and pre-planning from both sides, both from the district side and the, the family's sides so that
Yeah, and the likelihood is it's going to happen at some point. It, I mean, the reality and the data suggests that at some point we will probably have a positive case and, you know, we need to be prepared. We're prepared internally, but uh, you know, parents need to be prepared because that call could come tonight. You know, you just don't know and there has to be plans in place at home. What happens? You know, do I have childcare set up? You know, do I need meals? Do I need this? Do I need that? So, you know, even though we have put that message out continuously in our messaging that please be prepared because it could happen. I just want to reiterate that tonight to all that are listening that you really need to be prepared because it could happen.
I've also, I mean, I have younger kids and I, we have that conversation on a regular basis and I think that's helpful. Um my older one has a little anxiety over the idea of going remote, but the idea that we talk about it once in a while won't, won't hurt that in that sense. You know, I don't want him to be afraid of it. I don't want him to be upset about it. But he needs to realize that it is a reality at some point, it could happen. And we talk about it being a could, not a will or not a it's going to. Um so I think that's also important is to make sure that the, the kids in the homes have that understanding so that, that they know that it, it could happen and, you know, we'll get you back in school as soon as it's safe and um, you know, we'll be, we'll be right back at it. But right now, um, the good thing is it is safe and so they are able to still stay, which is good.
Well, I think it's important too to understand, you know, with all these zone designations that are happening right now. E- even at the state level, the State Department of Health, if you were in an orange zone a few weeks ago, you were mandated to close for four days until you were testing and everything was in place. But now with the data showing that the mo, the level of transmission in school is minimal, they've removed that. So you're not required to close for four days. You, you just, you stay open and test, test, test. So I think there's a, there's a global understanding that schools are safe right now. That the, the level of transmission in schools is minimal. So let's try to keep schools open as long as we can and keep students in front of their teachers for teaching and learning because that's what's best for kids as long as we can.
Anybody have anything else? Was this helpful to everybody to be able to talk through things and Bill, did you get what you needed?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I guess just like always, thank you, thank you to your, to your team, your administrative team and all the faculty staff. I think, uh, I, I don't think we can state enough how much this has shown the importance and the value. If people didn't already know, now they know the value that our teachers have for our, for our community, the, the staff that we depend on so much of the school. Um, we've always depended on them and now more than ever. So uh, I think uh, just a, a big thank you to everybody who's, who's continuing to work.
Well put Cory, well put.
Agreed Cory. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time and, and your guidance and, you know, from a board standpoint, um, thank you. Um, we're all in this together and we'll get through it together.
I think that means I've got the green light for a motion, yes? I don't want to rush anybody, so I'm asking. Um, okay, so I need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll move.
Hold a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.